Good evening, my name is Alton Toth and as District of Seashell Director for the Sunshine Coast Regional District Board, I will be chairing this public hearing tonight. I would like to introduce SCRD Director Andreas Tyz, who is in attendance as alternate chair to hear your comments firsthand. SCRD Senior Planner Yuli Sayao will introduce and state the intended purpose of the bylaws and answer any technical questions you may have concerning the bylaws. SCRD Recording Secretary Autumn O'Brien will be recording your comments this evening. We also have Bryce from our IT Department who will be operating the backend of things for us tonight. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is located and operates on the traditional territories of the Squamish and Seashell First Nations. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section 465 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to the board respecting matters contained in the proposal, Sunshine Coast Regional District Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 310.1922020. The public hearing with bylaw amendments were advertised in the June 11th and June 18th editions of the Coast Reporter Newspaper. In response to COVID-19 and in accordance with the B.C. Government Ministerial Order M192 to authorize local governments to hold public hearings electronically, this public hearing is being held electronically via Zoom and is open to members of the public. As the SCRD is unable to comply with public health orders by holding in-person open meetings, the SCRD Board has adopted a resolution for the continued use of electronic meetings without the physical presence of the public. This resolution describes the following measures being taken to ensure openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability in respect of the meeting. Notice of the public hearing and instructions on how to attend the meeting are advertised in the newspaper, SCRD website, and social media. The electronic meeting allows the public to speak, hear, watch, and submit written comments. Technical support is provided to ensure that all technical problems are resolved to enable accessibility of the meeting and related information. Written submissions by all other means continue to be accepted by the close of the public hearing. Those written submissions can of course be sent to planning@scrd.ca. At this public hearing, any person present who believes his or her interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained within the proposed bylaws. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to matters contained in the bylaws. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, except that they may speak again after those who have not previously spoken have had an opportunity to make a submission. Those who have registered on the speakers list will have the opportunity to speak first in the order of the list. The identity of persons who make written or verbal submissions will form part of the public record. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address for the record. Members of the board may ask questions following the presentation. However, the function of the board at this public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. If you pre-registered to speak, you'll be called on by the chair. Please wait for your turn. If you did not pre-register but wish to speak, please raise your hand in the webinar to indicate that you wish to speak. If you've signed in from a PC or a device using the Zoom app, you can click/tap the raise hand button and a member of staff will reach out to you in the chat to advise you that you've been added to the speakers list. If you're dialed in on a telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and you'll be added to the list, but we will only be able to identify you by your telephone number. And so when it's your turn to speak, I will say the participant calling in from 7405555 is up next. Please listen for your phone number. Be patient. There may be a lot of speakers, but we will get to you. When I call on you to speak by name or by telephone number if you called in, you'll be allowed to address the meeting. You will still have to unmute your microphone when prompted. On the Zoom app, mute/unmute is selected from the lower screen. On a telephone, the microphone is muted or unmuted by pressing star six, but you'll be unable to unmute until given direction to do so. When the staff moderator lowers your hand, the Zoom app often appears to disconnect. This is only a momentary glitch. You do not need to log out. Please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. If you do not, I will interrupt you and ask you to provide this information. We're required to collect it from everyone who addresses a public hearing. After you have spoken, we will lower your hand if you've not already done so yourself. If you wish to address the hearing again, once everyone else has had the chance to speak, please raise your hand again and we will follow the same procedure. After this public hearing has concluded, the board during a following open public meeting may, without further notice or hearing, adopt or defeat the bylaws or alter and then adopt the bylaws, provided that the alteration does not alter the use or increase the density. May I remind you that tonight is your opportunity for input on the bylaws and no further information can be received once the public hearing has concluded. Elected officials are not permitted to receive communication or correspondence such as email, phone calls, or written submissions after the close of the public hearing. Any further submissions need to be directed to staff. And that email address again is planning@scrd.ca. I will now ask SCRD Senior Planner Yuli Sayao to introduce and state the purpose of the proposed bylaws.
Thank you Chair. So I will introduce the bylaw by showing my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the, this is a application summary. The subject property is located at 2284 Pixton Road. The property is within Roberts Creek electoral area. The parcel of the subject property is almost two hectares. The official community plan land use destination for the subject parcel is Country Residential. The zoning bylaw, current zoning for the property is Country Residential 2, CR2, which permits only one dwelling. The applicant's proposal is for a size-specific amendment of the CR2 zone to allow a second dwelling. Now here's the application process so far. During November and December 2020, the applicant in coordination with SCRD staff has conducted a preliminary public consultation. The referrals of the application was also sent to agencies for comments. And the SCRD Board gave first and second reading to the bylaw on June 10th this year. And tonight is the public hearing. After tonight's public hearing, staff will prepare a public hearing report for the board to consider possible further actions to be taken on the, on the bylaw, on the proposed bylaw. And here's a proposed site plan for the proposed development, which is a one-story rancher. Is proposed to be located at the southeast corner of the property. The proposed size-specific zoning is to permit a second dwelling subject to seven conditions, which include a maximum gross, gross floor area of 130 square meters, a maximum building height of seven meter, a minimum setback from the east side property line, 15 meters, and a minimum setback from the front parcel line, 15 meters as well. And the minimum setback from the rear property line is 170 meters. And also minimum setback from the west side property line, 70 meters. So these setbacks are basically correspond to the proposed location of the second dwelling. And also, that and breakfast or short-term rental is not permitted. So that basically sums up the bylaws. So now I will return back to the chair to continue on the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sayao. And thank you for stopping the screen share. I will now call a first time for submissions in the order of the speakers list. I, is I, does IT or does our recording secretary have any prior names on our speakers list before we get going here?
IT does not have a pre-existing speakers list.
Thank you, and neither does our recording secretary. So we will move directly to the hands that are being raised in the Zoom application here tonight. So I believe first up is 7406771. And you've been given permission to speak. You will still need to unmute yourself using star six.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Name and address, please.
Aaron Morrissey, 2284 Pixton Road, Roberts Creek.
Go ahead with your comments.
What we are asking for is to build a second house that is 1,400 square foot, two-bedroom down below on a five-acre parcel. Yeah, what we're asking for is a very reasonable request. The road is all MOT maintained. We subdivided 10 years ago and because of that, they took over it, the maintenance of it. So we no longer touch it anymore. They grade it, they put the dust on there, the dust control stuff on there. They snowplow it, garbage pickup. We actually have a proper turnaround at the end of the road for big trucks as part of MOT. There also, there's a rental crisis on the Sunshine Coast like there's never been seen before. So this would be one small solution to it too.
Our understanding was, I'm Danielle Hegi. I'm also the owner at 2284 Pixton Road. Hopefully the chair allowed me to speak. I'm sitting next to my husband here, so.
Go ahead.
Anyway, it seemed, it seemed to me there was some issue about the road and, or there was some question that the owners here maintain the road and that is not an issue here. When the subdivisions did happen and the parcels were divided, it was part of the agreement that the, the roads had to be upgraded to MOT standards so that snowplows and the large trucks that do do the spraying can have a turnaround. And that goes, I believe, all the way up to Furburn Road.
So it gets graded a couple of times a year. And on across from Pixton Road, every house there also has two houses on it too, so. There's no reason why you couldn't have it on the other side for a few lots. Not gonna be that big of a change.
All right. If, if those are your, if that's it for your comments.
I've been so, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. We will lower your hand and continue on with our speakers list. Next up, I have 8864333. Again, you've been given permission to unmute yourself. You'll have to press star six and then start with your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Valerie McQueen. I'm at 2217 Pixton Road. My husband is here with me and if possible, he'd like to speak after I do. It is our understanding that our road is not fully MOTI, that it is designated 8F. Our property does have two houses on it. The property next to us does. The property to the west of us does not, and neither does the house beyond that, which is actually on ALR land. I oppose this application. I am writing this letter to let you know, to let you and the SCRD Board know how vehemently opposed I am to the zoning amendment application put forth by Aaron Morrissey. My husband and I, like many on the coast and our neighbors, thoroughly researched the zoning of our neighborhood when we bought this property. We looked for three years before we found our place. We had a clear understanding of what was permitted in our neighborhood before we bought where we did, as did the applicant. We expect the current zoning to remain in place and that no amendments be allowed. The current CR2 designation is clear, that there be no more than one dwelling on the property. Part of the deal with the CR2 designation was that no other densification would be allowed. The applicant is already in violation of the current zoning regulations. The property already has three separate dwellings on the property. One of the dwelling units is used by a family member and I understand that complaints have been filed with bylaws regarding the.
I'm gonna ask you to keep to the content of the zoning bylaw tonight, please. We can't go into speculation about complaints.
Um, it's not, um, I, I understand your comment, but I would like to have it in the record that there are anomalies going on with this property that should be reviewed and considered going forward on this. It is not right.
Unfortunately, that's not the topic of tonight's public hearing. Those are, those are valid comments. You have valid concerns. You should send those directly into SCRD staff. Tonight's public hearing is about the land use changes.
Thank you. It is not right to ask existing neighbors to compromise their lifestyle for this one individual. It is not right for those of us who have chosen and accepted the current zoning to be asked to change our view of our neighborhood and where we live. It is not right to ask us to accept a change that so clearly alters our neighborhood. It is not right to ask us to give up our choice of living in a rural neighborhood. The CR2 zoning comes with a stipulation that 20% of the property be treated. I believe this applicant is non-compliant with this stipulation. We chose to live in a rural neighborhood with lots of wide-open spaces. We chose to live in a neighborhood with little traffic.
I'm sorry, but the timer went. It was just very quiet. I'm trying to make it louder. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But the, the three minutes are up, so.
Thank you. Thank you Director Tyz. Val, I'm gonna have to cut you off there. I will let you turn it over to your husband to speak at this point if you want. If you would like to speak again, you can raise your hand again and we'll re-add you to the speakers list once everybody else has spoken.
Okay. Eric will raise his hand later.
Okay. In that case, thank you. And moving on on the speakers list, I have Jane Braun.
Hi, my name is Jane Braun. I live at 2222 Pixton Road, next door to the applicant. I have a couple of reasons why I oppose this application. Number one, when I purchased this property for a very high price two years ago, I had an expectation. I looked for a property that was one house on a five-acre lot. And that is why I chose the CR2 zone and that is why I chose this house. I have a right to reasonably expect that this zoning stands. And less and until there is a major bylaw amendment of 310 and an OCP amendment with the required complete public consultation by the whole of Roberts Creek. Properties, especially residential properties, should not be rezoned ad hoc. Piecemeal rezoning results in the erosion of public confidence and trust in local government and government processes. That's my first point. My second point is, I have, I take great issue with the staff report on this. The report says that this will not impact the rural residential feel of the neighborhood, spatial separation, et cetera, et cetera. I differ on that. Of course, there will be spatial separation issues. We'll have another house. And of course, with our already belabored infrastructure on the coast, there will be undue pressure on the road, on water resources, municipal services, et cetera, et cetera. It will affect the neighbors and my privacy and all the other things that go along with why the people in this neighborhood chose this neighborhood. So that's my second point. My third point is, this is a very dangerous precedent that we are setting here. This is, there's nothing special about this application and should this application be approved, this sets the floodgates opening for anybody else in the Upper Creek to apply for a rezoning and a densification of the area. And this is a very dangerous precedent to set. This completely undermines the intent of the OCP and this shouldn't be permitted. It's a complete departure from the OCP.
Thirty seconds, Jane.
Okay, and my, my fourth thing is, there's significant opposition to this application. There's about 90% of this neighborhood, I would say, is opposed, including the APC and the OPC. PC, they have all sent in their comments in opposing this application and I do believe that this should factor significantly into the board's decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for those comments tonight. And next up on our speakers list is Nigel Langley. So just a reminder, while Nigel's getting himself set up here, any, any written submissions that residents or affected property owners would like to submit can be sent into planning@scrd.ca before the close of the public hearing tonight. Go ahead, Nigel.
Hi there. I, I would like to say, first off, I'm grateful. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. We need your full name and address, please.
All right, Nigel Langley, 1101 Furburn Road. And I want to say thank you. I appreciate that we have this due process in the first place. I strongly disagree with the application. I'm co-owner with my parents up here and originally came out here as the builder to develop this property and land. The reason we originally bought out here, and my parents did, I should say, I came in later, was to have the space, to have the separation from population density. And this is a big concern, mostly in the level of the precedent being set for being able to densify an area once it happens in one location, you know, on our general, general neighborhood. It's, it's something that can be pushed upon further and we don't want two houses on every lot right around us when we originally planned to have this open space. The other thing that is a concerning factor, more than anything, is realizing the first comments that were made by Aaron about an MOT road. I've recently been made aware and I'd like to, for the record, hopefully you can, you can enlighten me, is are we actually an MOT road up to the top of Furburn Road? We were promised that when we went to CR2. We, we all put in money to be able to sub, get the ability to change to CR2 and have a single home on five acres and we're told that we had to get a road that was approved to MOT standard, MOTI standards. That being said, are you able to enlighten us whether that was actually done? Because I've been heard that it isn't an MOT road, MOTI road and it's something where it feels like we've fallen between, you know, the, things have fallen between the, the gaps and we've been kind of led astray in this whole process where we've all put in a lot of money to be able to have this happen in the first place. That's just more than anything, having an understanding of the processes that you guys were involved in and putting into effect previously. Have they actually been instituted to what we were promised in the original agreement to go to CR2? It still does not affect my opinion on whether. Yeah. Or me?
Thirty seconds remaining.
It doesn't affect my position. I still do not want to see population density grow, but I would like to find out how we stand opposed, imposed, because the grading and the treatment of the road is been done, but it is not something we were even aware of is a standard for us. We, we had to call and kind of beg Capilanos. Up until recently, we just had a grading and spraying done and we're kind of surprised to see it happen when it wasn't something we didn't actually call to beg for, so. I'd hope you can give me some insight on that. Thank.
The timer went. I don't know if my phone's not being noisy. Sorry.
Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Sayao, are you able to comment on the, the extent of the, the road network buildout?
Yes. So staff has specifically asked MOTI about the the road standards and maintenance of Pixton Road and the response we got is that the, the road is built to rural road standards. And it's a roller, the role right away is under MOTI jurisdiction, but it is a user-maintained role. Staff can definitely contact MOTI again to get clarification and more details before we move forward to present the board with the, with the public hearing report.
Okay. Thank you very much. But I did hear you say that, you know, although built MOTI standards, MOTI's view on it is that it is a user-maintained road at this time.
That's correct.
Thank you. Next up, we have Aaron Morrissey. My apologies if I get your last name incorrect there, but you should be able to unmute yourself. So name and address for the record and then your.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. It sounded, sounds like you've got an actual device logged on.
I, I've just stepped in and muted them. If you could ask them to turn off their second device.
For sure. Aaron, if you, yeah, if you could turn off your second device before muting again. That being said, if, if you were the applicant or the proponent, I'm gonna have to ask you to wait until other people have spoken. So I've got two more people ahead of, ahead of you if you wanted to speak again. I think we will move on to Rolf Braun.
Hello, it's Rolf Braun here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. We've got your name. Need your address.
Yeah, Rolf Braun, 222 Pixton Road. I'm a neighbor to the applicant. I've got three points I'd like to make. Number one, the staff report, which has been noted before, to me seemed very biased and I'm very disappointed in it, as I am also opposed to the proposed amendment. It seems that the staff report was much more a rebuttal rather than a kind of a true look and feel and understanding of the area. Objections and questions were asked and rather than a report being filed, it seemed that the report aimed to answer the questions and didn't really reflect a balanced view of what the neighborhood was actually saying. The fact that the report says it does not appear seems somewhat nebulous. You know, a proposal should be, or a, a report should, should be a little bit more balanced. So that's number one. I don't think it was very well researched. I think the time was taken to just answer questions rather than say, hey, what's going on in the neighborhood? Number two, and I know you've, you've made a point about not mentioning bylaw infractions. This is not about a bylaw infractions. It's about a secondary dwelling that is currently already on the property, a 750-square-foot cottage that was advertised on Craigslist. That was listed and has been rented for the past years that we've lived there, which has been three years. I don't understand why an applicant would be allowed to build a third dwelling already in addition to a property that, or a rental that's already there. Lastly, I would also like to echo the fact that I bought this home relying on zoning after living in a neighborhood where we were quite tight with. After living in a neighborhood where we were quite tight with the neighbors, and we sought an opportunity to retire in an area that gave us some privacy. We looked at the O C P, we researched the area, we wanted to buy something that gave us some space. This proposal will increase the traffic, stress the water infrastructure, increase the noise, will certainly increase the light pollution, and will devalue my experience. But on the other hand.
Four times, sir.
Oh, on the other hand, will take, will, will enrich one person while devaluing our properties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. If you want to speak some more, you're welcome to put your hand back up, and we will add you to the queue for the, the second call for, for comments and submissions. So I will move on to Zach Docstetter. And just while we've got him getting set up, anyone wishing to speak to the proposed bylaw amendments may do so by indicating that they wish to speak, either by raising your virtual hand or pressing star nine on a telephone keypad. Once staff add you to the list, they will lower your virtual hand to acknowledge you. Go ahead, Zach. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Zach Docstetter, one, one, six, seven Furburn Road. I'm up at the top of Furburn. I support this application. I think that, that two houses per five acres is hardly density. The people talking about having their privacy compromised all have no trees on their property. They have no privacy already. I don't feel like that's a valid concern. The road, especially to where Aaron and Danielle are, is more than suitable. It is perfect up to that point. The issues are all on Furburn at the corner of Pixton, where it's steep and there's a sharp corner. The rest of Roberts Creek above the highway is all zoned rural with two houses allowed for five acres. They are hardly dense. They are not developed. They're not subdivided, subdivided into into neighborhoods. It's, it's still very private. And I feel like it's, it's just the reality of growth and progress. There is a rental shortage on the house, on the, on the coast, and I feel like it's a valid solution. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. And next up on the speaker's list is Russ.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Name and address for the record, please.
Russ Broadman, one, one, six, six Furburn Road. I just had a couple of comments that I didn't want to just repeat what other people have said. But I wanted to know, I wanted people to get an idea of the history of what's been going on. These were ten acre properties. We talked with the S C R D, we spent a lot of time and money, and we agreed to a zoning. We didn't go to a zoning that existed. Would they had to create a new zoning that specifically said one house on a five acre lot? They could have gone to another zoning, and it would have been two. That was part of the deal. You could not increase the density, and that was hammered into us so many times. So we all agreed to it. And we agreed to some other things like a twenty percent for, for trees, that kind of thing. And finally, the properties were split. But again, this is an agreement made. We have an O C, we have an O C P. It tells you how you want the community to grow. I don't agree with the concept of saying, oh, let's try this one property and see how it goes and maybe change the way things are. It makes no sense. It's affecting people to try to do something that you're not allowed to do. So why don't you just reply for a zoning change? If that's what you really want to do, apply for a legal zoning change. That's what it's there for. The second point is affordable housing. We all know that it's a lot of people moving up here, and there's not affordable housing. This property is not affordable housing. There is practically no property you can build that's going to be affordable housing. In my written submission, you'll see there's six different pieces of paper showing how the classes that the S C R D made up in their report could not possibly afford to live in any new house as, and this one, even though it's smaller, apparently. It cannot be done. It is not affordable housing. It will take more than thirty percent of their gross income, which also means they have to pay for all utilities if they have it, for their phone bills, for their TVs. It makes no sense at all. It does not fit into that. So although the idea of trying to help people get somewhere to rent, this is going to be for people who have the money to rent it, which is not affordable housing. It is higher priced. Lastly, I do not understand. Again, we have, this was tried to be submitted in two thousand nineteen, went to first reading with the A P C, A C P C. At that point, the O C P C and the A P C did not.
Seconds left.
Okay, thanks. Did not agree to it, so it was retracted. Now we're here again, two years later. Basically, no one in the entire area is going to get anything out of it except Mr. Morrissey, who's allowed to put a second building on a property that was never made to take it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. That concludes our first call for submissions. So I will call a second time for further submissions. We do already have a speaker's list started. If you want to speak, please raise your virtual hand, and we will get to you in the order that your hand has been raised. I'm going to go to Nigel Langley again.
Hi, there is actually, for Chris Langley, I'm going to pass him on. He's ready to go here.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Just state your full name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Langley, one, one, zero, one Furburn Road. It's apparent from reading the staff report that it's not just a referral of the rezoning application, but a point by point rebuttal of all the negative points brought to the board by the residents. In the past, when this application was originally put before the board, it is not simply a neutral referral. Paragraph one of the discussion states that section seventeen point one five of the O C P reserves twenty percent of the land to be forested. At present, the subject parcel may have that twenty percent designation. However, it is not at present all forested. Paragraph two states that to compensate for lot size reduction and to maintain a general consistent spatial density in the area, the C R two zoning limits the number of houses to one per parcel. Lot size has not increased. The spatial density has not decreased. Those realities have not changed. Why should the addition of another home be allowed, which will effectively increase spatial density? Paragraph three states that section seventeen fifteen was adopted into the O C P in two thousand and twelve to provide guidance for transitioning from large former forestry parcels to smaller residential persons. Our road infrastructure and municipal services were limited, and development density needed to be kept low. This has not changed. There's not been an improvement in municipal services other than the periodic grading on Bing Road and Pixton Roads by Capilano highways on a multiple complaint basis. Why would the S C R D even consider an application to increase density without a parallel commitment to also improve road maintenance as well? Well, the surrounding residents have to complain more often than Capilano hours to compensate for more traffic on Pixton and Bing Roads. Paragraph three also states, therefore, there is a need to revisit these policies and other development policies in the O C P to see if they're still suitable for current conditions.
Thirty seconds remaining.
This is the very definition of urban planning. The research, educated assessment, and use of other jurisdictions, historical development data are parts of community planning that can result in a comprehensive community plan that can be followed and periodically assessed and are corrected to maintain a development path. In other words, a plan, case by case zoning amendments are not a plan, and they're not a substitute for not having a plan.
I have to cut you off there. Your, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next up on our speaker's list is Jane Braun again.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Just need you to state your name again, please.
Yeah, sure. No problem. It's Jane Braun, but I'm actually, and I think you guys received a signed direction on, on behalf of this individual. I'm speaking for Leanne Smith, but she's unable to speak at this time. And Yuli would have gotten the signed direction that I can speak on her behalf. Leanne Smith lives, she's the property owner of two, two, four, seven Pixton Road. She lives across from the applicant. And I, I, she's asked me specifically to make two points. She said that this is an area where only one dwelling is permitted per lot. I don't want increased density in this area. It will negatively impact the country rural feel. I built my home here with an expectation and belief that agriculture, equestrian, and rural interests were protected and valued. I have no interest in living in an area of suburban sprawl. That is why I chose to build in Roberts Creek. Her second point is the applicant has a cottage on the property above his garage, which he rents out. This is not permitted. It's been going on for years. He now wants to add a secondary dwelling. This is not the area to be operating multiple rental units. If the applicant wants to do this, he should move to a place where this is permitted. And I submit that on behalf of Leanne Smith, who lives across from the applicant at two, two, four, seven Pixton Road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Moving on, I will call on eighty six, four, three, three, three. And again, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Valerie McQueen, two, two, one, seven Pixton Roads. I won't go over the other items in my letter that were that other people have expressed in opposition to this application. There is one thing I'd like to add. And that is about water. When we moved here, our well was siphoned feed. And after the properties above us had been subdivided from ten acres to five acres, and new wells were put in to allow that subdivision, we saw a significant drop of water in our well, and many of those wells were not active at that time. We've actually had to install a pump, a hundred and sixty five feet down into our, our well. That's a substantial change. So issues with water need to be addressed, and we don't need any additional stresses on our water system. And I think that's it for me. My husband Eric. Oh, and with regards to Aaron saying that the houses across the street have, have two houses, two houses, it is a completely different zoning for three properties on the southern side of Pixton versus the properties on the northern side of Pixton. And Mr. Morrissey is well aware of that fact. And that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Up for a second time is Rolfe Braun. Again, just need you to repeat your name and address for the record.
Certainly, it's Ralph Braun from two, 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 two Pixton Road, neighbor of the applicant. I wanted to just finish the last point that I had, and it, it kind of falls into what the previous speakers have also said is that if Morrissey wants to develop rental units, there are many suitable plots and appropriately zoned lands available on the Sunshine Coast. And if Morrissey has this goodwill intent of building rental units, I would thoroughly encourage him to do it. But let's do it in areas that are zoned for it. I am very disappointed that this amendment has even been forwarded to the board. As mentioned earlier, we searched hard and long to find an area that was zoned the way we wanted it to be zoned so that we could enjoy our area. And when the, one of the speakers that, I think it was Zach, that said that, you know, he doesn't see any problem with the density, well, he didn't spend, he may have spent the money that we did, but we spent a lot of money to find this place. And for him to assume that it does not matter to us is, is an affront, and I would like to make it very clear that finding what you want, spending the money, retiring is a big, big life decision, and it seems very unfair that an applicant is not just automatically denied when zoning doesn't, you know, apply for that kind of an amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And next up, I believe we have Elaine Futterman. So name and address for the record, and then you can go ahead with your comments.
Elaine Futterman, seventeen thirty eight Lockyer Road, Roberts Creek.
Go ahead.
I feel that if the board were to agree with this change to allow second or possibly third or fourth dwelling on this property, it would seriously harm their credibility. It was only approximately ten years ago that Aaron Morrissey was allowed to subdivide his ten acre parcel into two five acres. And the reason for that was the road needed to be upgraded. Mote wasn't going to pay for it, and Mr. Morrissey required funds to pay his share. So the subdivision took place, and he got his two five acres. However, there was a criteria placed on that subdivision that there would be only one home, one dwelling allowed on each parcel. Now, a mere ten years later, the proposal comes forward to just get rid of this agreement, basically a contract between the regional district and citizens or the residents of that area, that there would be one home on each of these five acre parcels. And I suggest that if the regional district wants to make agreements with residents, they should put a caveat on every one of them saying that, but beware, this isn't really worth the paper it's written on. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Elaine, for your comments. Next up, we have Nigel Langley.
Hello, Chris Langley at one, one, zero, one Furburn Road. I wanted to further state something about paragraph five in the staff report that states that simply because the subject parcel is a C R two zone and adjacent to our U one parcels, which allow two homes per five acres, quote, this gives rise to the consideration of an exception to this limitation on a case by case basis, as sought by the applicant to align dwelling density with the R one zone. Why? Why does a simple proximity of one parcel to another predicate the need to align the density of both? This is not community planning. It's a permitting of densification by owners, not planners, by simple proximity. Once again, this is not planning. It is haphazard densification without any long term goals. It is actually the definition of urban sprawl. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I will call a third and final time for submissions. Just a reminder, if you do have anything written that you have not submitted yet, you need to submit it by emailing planning at S C R D dot C A before the close of this public hearing, as once this public hearing is closed, directors are no longer allowed to receive new information from the public. So I see no further hands up. So I will, I am now going to declare this public hearing closed for Sunshine Coast Regional District zoning amendment by law number three, ten point one, nine, two, twenty, twenty. Thank you for your attendance and your participation at the public hearing. And have a good evening.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for taking the time to voice your concerns and your opinions and any written submissions that you may have sent in.
Thank you, Julian Autumn and I T.